... frontrunner has finished last and can't figure out why because he or she may have been reading how they were a shoe in. What makes me very nervous about what's going on right now in terms of the kind of attention that Bill Clinton is getting in New Hampshire is that he is being automatically anointed the frontrunner and I'm telling our people, let's be careful. We don't crawl on the Clinton bandwagon. We don't have an election there yet because it has been the graveyard of Edmund Muskie and a lot of other frontrunners over the years. So, the people, I think, as Mr. McFarland said, ultimately are the best arbiters of what's true and what's not and what's in their best interest and what's not.
You know, one more thing, Tom, and I'd direct this to you. I used to live out west, in fact, when I lived in the state of Oregon. And I was getting ready to go to the polls to vote after work and heard, I think it was you, announce who'd been elected president. I went and voted anyway.
I didn't do that just because you were on your way to vote.
But you have changed your format. You do not announce now until the state has closed its polls. Is that correct?
It wouldn't have made any difference if you had voted for the candidate of your choice at that point because in presidential elections, they're decided by the electoral votes. And it's still possible in this country to compile enough electoral votes before you get to the Mississippi River, much less to all the way to Oregon. And when that feat has been accomplished, it's then news. And it's our obligation to say that the new president of the United States, based on the electoral vote that has been counted so far as Ronald Reagan, and however important I believe you are, Paul, and your voters, it wouldn't have made any difference in that election.
Tom, do you feel the national press has a particular role to play in how the public perceives Jesse Jackson or Doug Wilder? It seems to me that the public is being conditioned around this kind of candidacy more than around others. I think negatively.
Negatively around the two candidates? Oh, no, gee, I think--
Around the impossibility of a Jackson candidacy or the impossibility of a Wilder candidacy.
I think that they were separate cases and I would not make them just the two black candidates. I think that Jesse Jackson was a true national force four years ago and eight years ago. And I think that if he had chosen to run this time, he would have been again. I think that the consensus of judgment is, among his closest friends and advisors, is that Governor Wilder wasn't as prepared for this campaign as he might have been and he had big troubles in the state of Virginia that ultimately caused him to say, "I better give up my national hopes and get back and run for office there." But gosh, I thought that Reverend Jackson received an awful lot of attention. He was the only real story in Atlanta at the Democratic Convention, which was how Governor Dukakis was going to deal with Jesse Jackson. He got an awful lot of attention at that time. And I think that a lot of people believe, self-included, that the chapter, the final chapter in Jesse Jackson's presidential hopes have not been written yet.
Tom, you've heard this before. We need to wrap here very quickly. We need to move on. Coming up, does the presence of the media at demonstrations, is that incite problems? We'll take a look at that when we come right back.
This was our first house.
For 44 years, the Hollands have had their homeowner's insurance with American Family.
And this is our daughter. She's a doctor now.
Eighty percent of American Family policyholders have been customers for more than six years.
She moved to Chicago.
But she took American Family with her.
Loyalty, the mark of satisfied customers.
American Family Insurance.
Look in the white or yellow pages for the American Family agent nearest you.
Ice Capades presented by Legs Cheer Energy. That's excitement. That's spectacular. That's yabba dabba doo. Scooby Doo, Yogi Bear, and the Flintstones, America's favorite cartoon characters from the world of Hanna-Barbera, live on ice.
It's hot.
Ice Capades presented by Legs Cheer Energy.
At Target Center for nine spectacular performances, January 29th through February 2nd. Get tickets at Target Center.
Welcome back to everyone, to our discussions surrounding the role of the media. Special interest groups, single-issue groups, there are a lot of groups out there like that. And the question is, do they try to use the media to get their message across?
Groups lobbying for animal rights, for environmental reform, pro-choice, pro-life, mothers against drunk driving, and women against military madness are just a few of the groups that stage events with a twofold purpose, really. One, of course, is to educate and then to get attention, whether it's on television or in the newspapers.
Brad Woodard takes a look at the question, is the media covering an event or are the events created solely for the media?
It's pretty scary. A lot of adrenaline.
Peace! What are you doing now?
I think you learn quite soon that you've got to be very entertaining.
Don't fight her!
What we're getting away from is information that makes people think. And we're getting into information that entertains and amuses people.
You don't need to kill your baby, please. You don't have to kill your child.
Advocacy groups do have their personal agendas that are terribly important to them. And they tend only to see those personal agendas.
This is the bulletproof vest. Is this what I have to wear now to be queer?
We're the only minority that constantly has to prove our existence.
Ours is a country rich with diversity. The seams, when combined, make up an elaborate patchwork quilt, pieced together daily by the media for display.
For better or worse, it's through that display that most Americans assimilate their information, inform their perceptions of the world that surrounds them. To a large extent, the media determine what issues they focus upon. And therein, critics say, lies the problem.
We're being told what we should think. The media is setting the agenda of what can be discussed. It's making all the assumptions on which we have to talk if we're going to talk.
Mary Shepherd heads Women Against Military Madness, a grassroots organization that staged numerous anti-war demonstrations during Operation Desert Storm. Shepherd says news outlets are failing to meet their obligations by, among other things, oversimplifying matters.
The anchor people and whoever writes the stuff that they read give you two different versions or two different solutions, as though those were the only ones possible. And they're almost alike, just shades of difference. While we have about 20 other solutions or versions that are either closer to the truth or more viable solutions, and we're never allowed to present them.
Opposition to war in the Gulf sparked confrontation on a number of Minnesota campuses today.
But the fact remains, news is a finite commodity, measured in minutes and columns. There simply isn't room for 20 solutions. And many special interest or advocacy groups feel that in the process of deciding what's news and what's not, those making the decisions are influenced by their own biases. Pro-life activist Brian Gibson.
You know, animals are shown that are torn apart regularly. Victims of murder are shown on TV, pictured in the news. They aren't too graphic in those situations, but the broken, torn bodies of unborn children are, for some reason.
Still, others say the bias comes in the form of stereotypes. Tim Campbell is publisher and editor of the GLC Voice, a gay newspaper based in Minneapolis.
What I see is a tug-of-war, where the reporter is trying to get the activist to mouth some pablum that would be compatible with the reporter's preconception and--
Campbell points to the murders of John Channawith and Joel Larson as an example. Both gay men murdered within days of one another last summer. Channawith and another man were shot while allegedly having sex in Riverside Park, a known gay hotspot. Larson, on the other hand, was killed while walking, presumably by himself, through Loring Park, also known as a gay hangout. At the time, there was much speculation the two murders were related.
There was no sexual element in the Joel Larson murder. The media insists on imagining because it was in the gay park that there was a sexual element. There was no sexual element.
But for all their criticism, activists find themselves between a rock and a hard place. If they want their voices heard, and they do, that means vying for news coverage. With so much news and so little time, sometimes it takes a lot to get noticed.
I think the focus goes on the theatrics and not on the message. And part of that demonstration is that theatrical part. But that's not the reason that we're there. We're there because we have something to say. And every time that it gets lost--
And some say, it's not all that's lost.
--because there are times when people really feel the need. They're hungry for real information. And they have been manipulated by and used for so long that they have no faith in it anymore.
We want to go now to Joan who's up in the balcony with a question.
I'm here with Mary Shepherd again, her second appearance. She wants to know about access to the media, how to gain access to the media. Looks to me like you're doing okay, Mary.
Well, I must say, I'm surprised that I got so much. And maybe I don't deserve more, but I do want to know, if you have an issue that you think is really, really important to everybody in Minnesota, how do you get past these gatekeepers, these editors? And I'd like to give a particular issue that's happened right now, and that's the storage of nuclear waste in the floodplain of the Mississippi. There's a Sioux tribe that is trying to get that information to the people. It was not in any of the electronic media, so they finally tried to buy time. They were refused. And I would like to know what you would suggest that they should do, having tried every avenue they can for an issue that I think is just crucial.
Mary, I'm going to make you a promise. I'm going to talk to Paul about it right after this program.
Well, I'll tell you what. Tom mentioned it to me earlier. And Mary, what we're going to do, if you stay tuned to Care 11, at the end of the month, at the end of January here, we're going to do a half-hour or hour program on that. We haven't exactly decided on the time length of the program. It may in fact be an hour. But we're going to address that very issue. We are bringing in people on all sides of the issue. And we will do a background piece on the issue as well to begin the program. And then we will let everybody have their say, somewhat like we did with the issue involving Northwest Airlines.
Can I say something about that general issue, about how do you get access? You're never going to get past the gatekeepers. What you want to do is try to develop a relationship with the gatekeepers. And the fact of the matter is, I was describing this to a friend of mine the other day, it's a little bit like retailing. You really have to find out who's in charge, write to them, make a persuasive case. They may not always buy your argument. Because news, like everything else, beauty included, it's often in the eye of the beholder. And that includes bias. So, we may not always agree with your point of view, but at least we should listen. We're going to go back down here to the floor as well, I think, to Lisa.
You have a question for both Paul and Tom. We would all like to see topics that we were talking about before. Mr. McFarland was talking about, the last lady was commenting on, topics of a little more weight. While we say that, I think most people watch the quote-unquote mainstream news instead of McNeil-Laird. And I think most of us in the room would be caught watching Inside Edition or something like that. Because these are the topics that sell. With that in mind, as more specialized TV programs like Inside Edition and Hard Copy, things of this nature come about, how is that going to change what you cover on both a local scale and a national scale? Keeping in mind that, you know, we vote with our viewing time, which turns into dollars for you all and whoever's watching you. The more ratings you have, the more money you can pull in for the commercials for the stations.
I'm aware of McNeil-Laird, but what's Inside Edition? No, I do. I do know what that is, but I honestly, I cannot recall a day since Inside Edition has been on the air, or Hard Copy, or any of those programs, where anybody in the newsroom has said, "Have you seen what was on Hard Copy last night?" Geez, we need to do a follow-up on this. It has not had an impact on us. That's entertainment programming, as far as our newsroom is concerned, and that's where it will stay.
I think that the news, in many ways, is not ahead of the change in the times. We're always slightly behind. And as we're slightly behind going into the 1990s, I think that you'll find newspapers and television alike will be dealing with much more serious issues because the country is in a serious mood now. They're desperate for answers. We are a part of that. We're desperate for answers about our own business even. So, I think you will see more serious coverage. Pat?
This is Julie Costa.
Mr. Brokaw, journalist David Shaw has written a lengthy article in which he asserts that the media has taken a pro-abortion position. And I would certainly agree. How fairly do you feel that the right-to-life issue is being covered?
Well, I talked to David at some length about that. And a lot of it, and our differences of opinion, were that he was referring mostly to the kinds of language that we use in it. I think that we have covered the issue fairly. It's an argument that I suspect that you and I can't resolve between ourselves here tonight. I do think that David Shaw's article made me think more carefully about how we describe the various groups. For example, I know that a lot of groups who describe themselves as pro-life do not like it when we say anti-abortion. But we do pick up pro-choice, for example. So, we've thought through more carefully about how we describe those groups who say that they are pro-choice. It is an emotional issue in this country, but yet overwhelmingly, the national polls will show you that the people who are most sympathetic to those who now describe themselves as pro-choice, and as a political issue across the country on a national basis, it has not cut as deeply as a lot of folks would like it to. So, it's a struggle for us constantly, and it will be again in 1992. I feel that we've worked very hard to give it fair coverage. I slightly disagree with my friend David Shaw about his analysis.
We have a question on-- Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to mention also that when the mainstream press is doing a story on Native American groups or activists that are protesting something, they seem to latch an adjective to them last in the 60s and 70s when AIM was doing some protests. They called them militants, and that name stuck with them--
You're always militant.
--for 20 years. Now, it's dissidents. So, I'm wondering where these adjectives are coming from and why they feel they have the right to call Native American protesters dissidents and militants.
I think that's just probably a lack of good work on the part of the people who are doing it. Let's see, we have another question out here on this side of the audience.
I have a question. What do you think about your visit to Moscow and how our media covers what is really happening there? And maybe rather than use nice, short word shortages, started to use real-world disaster and starvation. Is it really happening there?
It's the most exhilarating thing that I've witnessed as a reporter when I go to Russia. I've been going there now for 20 years. And what has happened in the last four or five years has been terribly exciting from a personal point of view for me, especially for those people who are freed at last to tell the truth about what's going on in their society, to share it, not just with us, but with their neighbors as well. I think they're among the most courageous reporters that I know right now, and they have the most daunting job that I know in this world, to describe what is going on in the chaos of the Commonwealth, and especially with the economic reforms, where everyone's emotions and even their physical well-being are at stake here. So, I think they're doing a terrific job.
We're going to take a break. And when we come back, Tom doesn't have a choice. We're going to tie him to a chair right out here. You can have at him. We'll be right back.
Watch it, watch it. Featuring the Twin Cities' greatest hits, low, low prices, and good stuff. RTV, RTV. Watch and win a trip to the Ice Palace Super Bowl party and your chance to be limbed away to Super Bowl XXVI. RTV, Rainbow in-store TV. RTV, watch it and win.
Come to the Pet Food Warehouse grand opening celebration this Friday and Saturday at their newest location, 250 Osborne Road in Fridley. Come join in the fun at the Pet Food Warehouse now in Fridley.
I was one of those who didn't want to know. And it cost me my breast and almost my life. So, now I watch Diana Pierce on Care 11. Every day on health care, she has the latest medical breakthroughs from experts who know. And that makes me feel good. Because good health care really matters.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Tom Brokaw here at Pearl Harbor. Good evening from Saudi Arabia. As we continue this special edition of NBC Nightly News. Good evening from Moscow. Good evening from Capitol Hill. From London, I'm Tom Brokaw. As we say goodnight from Brandenburg, Dayton. Who knows what tomorrow will bring? Who knows, indeed, for those of you who think I'm out here to do my Frank Sinatra imitation to sing it? This, in fact, is the television news version of those old Viking funerals. What Paul Majors has done is put me in a boat, set it afire, and shipped me out to sea right here. I said in an interview with Brian Lammert today in the St. Paul paper that I feel very strongly that too much of television news, especially at the national level, is that we talk and you listen. I think a lot of my friends even, who are still here in the upper Midwest, wonder what may have happened to me once I moved to Washington, New York, Los Angeles, or the other places that I have worked over the years. Have I lost touch with the values of this part of the world, with the concerns here? This is a small effort on my part to tell you tonight that I have not, and that I want to hear what you have to say about what we do and how we do it, because these are very instructive experiences for us. We're going to go upstairs to a question.
Yes, I have a question that's related to the controversy that's been going on recently around the film JFK. And I'm not going to ask you about the film, but I did want to ask you how you felt the media of today would have dealt with the assassination of President Kennedy differently if it had happened today, or similarly.
No, I think that there would have been a-- I think that the investigation process that took place around JFK stretched out too long. I think it would be compacted a lot more now. There would be a lot more intense coverage of the assassination and the motivations. My own reading of it is, is that we probably would not have arrived at a different conclusion. We had this discussion just yesterday, how do we deal with the film JFK? Which, I hasten to add, I have not yet seen, but based on all the descriptions that I have read of it, from people that I trust, I think that it's intellectually terribly dishonest. I am going to go see it for myself. I finally have concluded that I need to do that. But we are working on a story tomorrow on Nightly News about why not release the papers? Let the Warren Commission documents be set free so that the American people can see for themselves. I think that's the only way we can deal with it. And I don't know what the conclusion of the American people will be. There may be some kind of, if you will permit me the metaphor, other smoking gun in there. I suspect not at this point, but I do think that we ought to be able to judge for ourselves. Pat?
You have a long line here, people with questions. You're going to be busy tonight.
Or people to whom I owe money. You don't know at this point. Right.
Cecilia Wilde from Maplewood, Minnesota. And what I'm asking Mr. Brokaw concerns a local issue, but it reflects a national problem as well. A boy in South Dakota has his arms torn off in an accident, receives extensive coverage on both TV and in the papers for two days. A baby has an arm torn off prior to birth, is born alive and lives. This story is carried into New York Times, Washington Times, and USA Today. There is no coverage in the Twin Cities and many of the other high national papers. My question is, why does the media refuse to print or air any story that puts abortion in a bad light? This was the result, I'm sorry I neglected to say, of a botched abortion where the baby survived.
Yeah. The fact of the matter is that there have been some very difficult stories that have been done on abortion. It is one, as I say, that I don't think that we can resolve here tonight. I know that the emotions run very strongly in the state about that issue. Over the years that we have covered abortion, we have covered it from A to Z, so far as I'm concerned, that we have been as fair as we can be with it. I can tell you that there are other issues as well that are very emotional out there that will never get resolved here tonight. Mr. McFarland has one, Ms. Denny has one. We just do the best that we can. And if we don't always strike you as fair, that makes me feel bad. We'll try a little harder the next time. But I think that a careful review of this issue or most others will find that they are covered very thoroughly. Good, bad, and indifferent. Joan?
Tom, I have Melanie Brown up here. She told me to tell everybody she's from Concordia College in St. Paul.
I was just wondering, we had talked about all the bad things you hear in the news, and I was just wondering how you handle situations or stories that you find frustrating or make you angry.
Well, I swallow hard and try to get forthwith them. On the air, sometimes I find myself unexpectedly moved by events that I don't think will touch my emotions, but do. I may have even seen a videotape several times. I can tell you that I am a sucker for touching sports stories, for example, or stories of small people involved in large triumphs. And I will tell you too, all of you, that every night, we do try to tell the good news. I mean, that's why the closing story is there, for example. There are stories of triumphs of all kinds. One of the first stories that I got involved in in medicine involves a man who's a friend of mine who's here tonight, and that's John Nigerian from the University of Minnesota. We've known each other for about 25 years now. Because I went to a meeting of the Board of Regents in California where they were trying to cut back the funds for the University of California Medical School. And the chancellor at the medical school was very clever. He brought over John Nigerian and about five renal transplant patients who were alive and who may not have been because of budget cutbacks. And John told it in the most compelling fashion. We began a friendship that has also been productive for me professionally because I've been able to keep up with good news about medicine through John, transplants in various areas and progress that has been made. That's just one of a thousand examples of the good news that we have tried to reflect over the years. Lisa?
Mr. Brokaw, Mr. Majors, certain members of the panel. How do you compare the general media accuracy of reporting the news without bias versus those news publications whose creed it is to report the other side of the news as it really is? Or does the media work on John Keene's principal, words ought to be a little wild, for they are the assault of thoughts on the unthinking?
Well, you know, news is really the first rough draft of history. Emphasis on rough. We're trying to deal with facts. The truth can be very elusive. You know, you can take, go into any court case, and you've got a lot of witnesses, and you'd be enormously surprised, I think, by the variety of descriptions that you would get just for a fender bender about who was at fault and how it happened. We have to come to grips with that every day on a much larger scale. I can tell you that I've got a lot of friends in the newspaper business across this country. They've got a rich variety of personal beliefs. But when it comes to what they're doing, and this is true in television news as well, they have really only one objective, which is to try to tell you what happened that day in the fairest, most accurate way possible. Because if they don't, what they're putting at risk is their own livelihood. You know, we come to you with a reputation for integrity, not much more. John has surgical skills. I have other friends out here who have other business skills tonight. I've got a reputation for telling you how things are going in your society and in the wider world, and you can either rely on it or not. And if you can't rely on it, you'll quickly find that out, and you'll turn away from me. So, I think that the whole business of news editors in television or in newspapers getting together and somehow trying to impose their bias on a story just doesn't have much foundation to it. I really don't. Karen?
Hello, Mr. Brokaw. I never doubt your integrity or your concern for what you do, but there's a great rift in the media. How do you rectify major commercial interests being one of the major polluters and destroyers of habitats on this planet? And being able to justify biting the hand that feeds you, basically? How are you going to turn the tables around? Because major commercial interests, no one's going to turn around in the news and say, "So-and-so is bringing the show, is also dumping on our planet and dumping on our future." How are we going to rectify General Electric leaving a wasteland of nuclear waste from thousands of years ahead of us? Will you ever do a major report on General Electric's destruction of the health of this planet through its nuclear enterprise?
The fact of the matter is that we've done a number of stories about nuclear waste that have involved GE as well. And what we have done within the news division is we have given GE more coverage than it deserves on negative stories because we are so sensitive to that. We've also added language to any description of any story that involves GE, in which we say, "General Electric," or GE, comma, parent company of NBC, comma, and then go on. But I can tell you, in the last several years since GE has owned the news division, we have come across stories that if we had not been owned by that company, we never would have put on the air because they were not of general interest. I'm not talking about the nuclear waste question now. And we have gone ahead and put them on the air because we do not want anyone to think that we are in some way attempting to keep negative news about General Electric from the public. And we have continued to address nuclear waste. GE is not the only company that's involved in it. And by the way, there are lots of people, more these days, I don't happen to be one of them, that believe that nuclear power will be revived as we move toward the 90s and not be dismissed as it was in the 80s. So, it's a complicated issue, and we will continue to cover it. And the role of GE will have no impact on the decisions that we make. I can offer you my personal assurance. We'll be back right after this. Thank you.
Driving home in the heartland, 1992 Geo Metro is the best you can get. At 58 miles per gallon highway, Geo Metro's the highest gas mileage car in America. And with a price tag of only $65.34, Geo Metro's the pump-pass-and-penny pension winner. Driving you home in the heartland, Chevrolet Geo. See your Heartland Chevrolet Geo dealer this week and save. RTV, RTV, Rainbow in-store TV. Watch it, watch it. Featuring the Twin Cities' greatest hits, low, low prices, and good stuff. RTV, RTV. Watch and win a trip to the Ice Palace Super Bowl party and your chance to be limbed away to Super Bowl XXVI. RTV, Rainbow in-store TV. RTV, watch it and win.
We use the loan to fix up old classics like this '58 Pontiac.
Tom and Marcia Reno have a line--
Tom and Marcia Reno have a line of credit through American Family Financial Services.
There were no closing costs, no extra costs at all.
And you don't need to be insured with American Family to get a loan.
Couldn't believe how fast and easy it was.
We like things streamlined.
American Family Insurance.
Look in the white or yellow pages for the American Family agent nearest you.
Is this all you're planning to bring back from your next vacation? This year, take home a Club Med vacation. Their Club Med villages for families, couples, and singles.
We don't have much time left, but we would like to accomplish just a little bit before we go. Tom?
Mindy, Karen, we all know that our business and your business, newspapers, tough economic times, a lot of pressure these days to be more economically successful. Does that put more pressure on you to be more sensational on the front page of your paper?
It puts more pressure on us to be smarter about what we do every day, because there's not anybody with a giant pocketbook in the sky telling us there's lots of money to be had, and we can hire 40 more reporters to cover the issues, many of which got raised here tonight. But I think we've had an exciting opportunity to hear a refreshing change of perspective, I think, is going on in this country, where people are far more interested in a serious exploration of the issues. And that provides us with a unique opportunity to maybe change our resources and not cover some things, and let us cover some serious issues that are out there, like childcare and transportation and the rebuilding of this country and the economic issues. And that's wonderful.
Governor Carlson, you think that the people of Minnesota, and across this country for that matter, are ready to make the tough decisions and to read enough to know to make the informed decisions about their lives?
I think the answer is a definite yes. I would like to see more politics drift more towards substance and less toward sizzle. I think it's essential for the '90s.
Janet, let me ask you something. What can I expect, and what can our viewers expect, as we leave here tonight? What are you going to take out of here and perhaps implement at Channel 11?
Well, I think the first thing that I'm going to do is take many of the comments that you've shared with us, and have those kinds of discussions with our own staff. I think many of the things that you said tonight are very enlightening, probably the first time that many of my staff members have heard comments like this. And I think that's very healthy, and I think we can evolve and grow from here.
Tim McGuire, if we come back, in 10 years, will we be having the same discussion?
No, we'll have a lot of different discussions, because the '90s are going to be one of the great change decades. And people are going to be more involved. The people are going to dictate the '90s and dictate our future, and the discussion will be a lot different in 10 years.
Tom Conroy, journalism better today or worse than it was 20 years ago?
It's better. We get... It's easier to digest the stuff. We have more accurate information, and there's more of it, and it comes in a lot better form.
Is there too much of it?
I don't think there's too much of it. The problem is trying to get people to seek it out.
All right. Thank you all, panel. We'd like to thank you very much for coming here and being with us this evening. We'd also like to thank all of you for braving the cold temperatures out there and being a part of us here at the World Theater. And Tom, certainly a very big thanks to you for coming to Minnesota, broadcasting the nightly news from here, and joining us for this evening.
This is genuine. It's not something that I'm paid to say. My thanks to CARE-11, and to all of you especially. We're only as good as you want us to be, and we're better when you ask more of us. And that's an important thing for you to keep in mind as you reflect on this evening. Thanks very much for joining us.
Maybe in 10 years, you'll come back. Thank you.
Thank you.[1755.21]